Eric and I are members of the committee, so our quorum is present and Mr. Hidalgo is sitting in for Tommy Angel, who could not be here tonight. So the first matter on the agenda is a presentation to discuss changes to the Schools of Choice Department. Ms. Samick?
Yes ma'am. Good afternoon. I'm Annette Samick, Chief Academic Officer. A few months ago, I was asked to review the Schools of Choice program and consider making changes, including a name change, application lottery changes, eligibility and retention standards, and changes to marketing and advertisement, fall frenzy, and to improve our community involvement. So at this time, I would like our Marketing and Recruitment Coordinator, Ms. Azzi Yadzi, she'll present the committee's recommendations. And, board members, I would ask that you please hold your questions to the end of her presentation. Thank you.
So we were asked to look at a new name, because Schools of Choice was getting confused with School Choice. And after tossing around five or six names, we came up with this one. We asked a community, we asked principals, we asked, you know, teachers and different members of central office. So we present to you Lafayette Academies of Excellence, where students can dream, create, and move on to lead the community. One of the things that we're looking at is the application, how to change it, how to make it better, you know. The whole concept has evolved from 12 years ago and 15 years ago. So here's a really quick rundown of it. Some of the things that we're looking at is no sibling priority, no entry for grades four, five, eight, 11, and 12. Instead of having three months of an application period open, it's going to be one month. And there's significance in that, because it deals with scheduling and bus transportation routes and all that. So the sooner we get the students in and applied, the sooner we get the results, and the sooner the departments get that that need it. When you look at eligibility, one thing the board tasked us to do was to look at eligibility requirements. We have three different ways of doing that. So we have elementary, middle, and high school. And you have to be mindful of elementary when you think of requirements, and the same with middle and the same with high. So elementary is considered exploratory, middle is introductory, and high school is mastery. The expectations of eligibility or entry for a high school student would not be the same for an elementary student, but they would follow the same type of process and the same concept. This was one of the things that was discussed as well. In elementary school, currently, there's no grade requirement for entry. And entry is pre-K, K through five. And one of the proposals, as I mentioned, is no entry in fourth and fifth grade. So what do you do then? You look at third grade. You make it more personal and unique. So a third grade entry, they've missed K through second grade. They've lost some of those components. Even though it's still introductory and basic, it's still time that they have not spent in that curriculum, in that environment. We look at middle school and high school, and the same applies to those. When you look at submission and selection process, the basics of it doesn't change. Parents apply online. We're looking at the, again, evolution, so we would remove some of the questions that are answered on, asked on the application. And then, again, our time period. So we would, instead of having the lottery or that selection process in March, we would have it in January. The major component of the evolution of the whole Schools of Choice academies is that program development and enhancing those unique learning opportunities. Right now, we're going to start working with academic specialists and academy directors to incorporate more academy-only offerings to make it completely unique. You know, right now, we are not where we were 12 years ago, where we didn't have arts at every single school like we do now, or access to arts, or access to science, or STEM applications at every single school that we have the potential to have now. So we want to create that unique opportunity for students that they wouldn't get anywhere else in the parish. Working with internships and businesses locally to put hands in hands. So currently, right now, in high school academies, there's only two, maybe three, that work with internships. We're looking at changing that for all high school students to have internship opportunities. And then, grants, of course. I'm proposing that all academy directors apply for at least one grant per year, and I'd be able to support that and help that with them. When you talk about marketing, again, times have evolved. We're going to use social media more. We're going to enhance our website, so it's more interactive. We've got community involvement, sponsorships, recruitments, networking opportunities. And one of the ideas that we have, we're starting, is selling radio ads on our Northside High radio station, and connecting them, and making sure they're at as many football games and sports activities as they can, at community events, you know. And then, of course, our promotional video that we're going to create. When you talk about recruitment, we have done away with fall frenzy. So you ask, what would be the replacement for fall frenzy? A new strategy is to go pathway-specific. You want to have the performing visual arts students together, so that, you know, everyone can see that K through 12 progression and what they get out of the academy, because that is a pathway. We're going to continue to have our open houses, our eighth-grade days, not just limited to feeder schools, but to all eighth graders, and even fifth graders. Annual Expo, again, we'll get to that in a minute. You talked about, you asked us to look at expectations. Currently, we have expectations that are unique to each academy program, but there's nothing unified, to create that feeling of just one academy concept. So on the left here, we have expectations agreements. And we have student agreement, parent agreement, and academy agreement. So while we expect students to do something, we expect parents to do it, but we're expected to give it back to them, too. On the right side, we talk about the process of how students can be removed from the academy. Currently, it's a one-year commitment. So a student stays in for a year, or signs up for a year, and we commit to keeping them in there for a year. However, that doesn't work to our advantage a lot of times, so we want to look at a better way of approaching that. And due process is that way. So on the right side, you can see that. The why a student would come out of the academy, the when, and the how. Recruitment activities. Fall frenzy, no more. Festival of Academies. Lafayette is festival-rich. It's a concept, and it's part of the culture that everybody recognizes. So everybody's used to going from one place to another. And with the whole pathway theme, we would connect and align with a venue or community partner. For example, with ACA, we would work with them, because we work closely with them in other aspects, and we would have our performing and visual arts showcase at the ACA. So, again, we're building bridges and creating partnerships, and we're incorporating our community partners with our themed and our learning experiences at LPSS. This is another idea. It's just a conceptual design of it, of what it would look like. Oh, okay. So, this is a map, easy to get to through public transportation, kind of like that hopping around to one thing to another. The importance of this is, this requires parents to have a conversation with their child about what interests them. Instead of having a one-stop shop, where it's just stimulation after stimulation and all these different things there, you're kind of, not forcing, but creating that opportunity for that parent to have that conversation before, to say, you know, "Little Johnny, they are having this expo day. And here, they're having performing and visual arts, here, they're having law and leadership, here, they're having world languages. What is it that you really like to do?" And so parents can go from one place to another, or just pick two, or go to all of them, or just one. But it requires that conversation to happen before, so that the desire to apply is more because of the theme and the academy, not the school. When we talk about marketing, we talk about community relationships. So, you know, that is with sponsorships and with partnerships. And that, again, grows that opportunity to create the academies to be more unique and that program development. Networking is a really big component of that. And through the partnerships and the internship opportunities, and the involvement in local events, you get a good handle on that networking opportunity there. You know, currently, we do perform at different things, but this will allow us to perform even more, be more involved in there. And what it ultimately does is, it creates, again, with that partnership, the opportunity to have naming rights. So let's take Health Careers at Northside High, for example. Our Lady of Lords is a really good sponsor and a really good supporter. They have a healthcare clinic there on site. And creating naming rights, if we called it Our Lady of Lords Health Careers Academy, we have that partnership there. We're building that trust between the community and LPSS. We're creating opportunities for our students to grow, to do internships, you know. We're also allowing them to support us in in-kind financial, you know, opportunities and such. So it makes it a little bit more unique than what any other student just gets as a student for LPSS. So what is this all about? Creating true distinction and excellence in public education. And I hope that I've answered most of the questions that you had from the first meeting, and I'm here now to answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
All right. I know Mr. Konecik has a lot. Mine is, if a student is removed from an academy, then they have to go back to the school that they're zoned for?
The way I like to look at it is, to get away from the conversation of zoned and non-zoned, or home zone. Because that's not, I, that's not what it's, if a student is in an academy, whether they're zoned or not, then what happens is they're no longer an academy student. What happens after that is, depends on other, you know, policies and procedures that we have. So to answer your question, if they're not zoned, yes?
Yes.
Okay. You made me hold my questions till the end, so. The first thing is, I see that you put a backup slide, because I think I previously mentioned that I like the name Lafayette Elite Academies. And when I see Lafayette Academies of Excellence, I'm just going to say, I don't, I didn't change my mind, I still like Lafayette Elite Academies. Now, I am one of nine people that have an opinion on this, and I'm sure that if we ask this room, everyone's going to have a different opinion. But academies of excellence and elite academies, to me, I think that elite's better, which we don't have to decide on that today, it's just giving you my feedback on that. I also think it's shorter, more succinct, and I think it's a little bit more telling. My, I think my biggest concern, and I think the thing I want to talk about first, is when we go to application eligibility. I find it very difficult to justify spending one cent more on an academy student for a program that is supposed to be special. If that student cannot score more than a 2.0 in feeder classes, that will support that. For instance, if a kid can't get higher than a 2.0 grade point average in math and science, why in the heck are we going to put him in a STEM academy? It just, it baffles me that we would even consider that. If a kid cannot get higher than a 2.0 in art, or band, or those type of supplemental classes that are going to feed into an academy, why would we consider putting them in a position where we expect them to excel and/or be elite? So I understand that we want to make sure that these academies are open and available to the students, but when we don't have some sort of criteria that makes them excellent or elite, how do we expect them to then perform to some other standard once they're in these schools?
We'll take that into consideration.
The application eligibility, I have some concern on the elementary school requirement when we have them submit a letter or essay from a parent. And it goes back to making this eligible for any and all students. I mean, I have great parents, fantastic parents, wonderful leaders in the community, and in their own right, when I was young. But getting them to write me an essay to enter into a program at any level of my academic career would have been impossible. And I just don't think that that, I think that if we can provide a document to a parent and says, "Do you agree to these terms and conditions?", you know, "Check yes, sign your name", I think that is something that we can ask a parent to provide us, but to require a parent of a, you know, second grader who may, or may not, have the intellectual or academic ability to write an essay, or to really succinctly tell us why they want their kid in a program, is a difficult requirement for us to have. Now, having a middle school or high school write an essay saying why they want to be in a program, I think is to be expected.
Thanks.
On the, on the appeals for removal, on that expectations agreement, so are we talking about having a basic requirement for all programs, that you must maintain this minimum amount for all programs, and then each specific program may have their own specialty requirements?
Correct. So it would be, if you look at the student agreement, that 2.5 that you were talking about would be a requirement for them to stay in. And then, there would be a requirement for them to attend all program extracurricular activities, you know, all the other things that factor into their participation in their grade would be a requirement. Currently, sometimes, there's this back and forth between athletics, you know, and their, what do you call it? Yeah.
I think, if we remember, some of this started when we were getting, the board was getting anecdotal information from, I mean, I can tell you, my, one of my schools, Alamo, we have stu, we have a, we have a section of students in a specialty band program that want to be there, and we have a section that don't want to be there, yet they're in an elite program, or an academy of excellence. So do we think that we, with this proposed method, we would have the process in place to where we can prevent that in the future? Because, again, a 2.5 C average in band, when I'm in an elite band program, I'm not sure if that's, I don't know. I mean, I'm kind of hoping that you guys come back with what you think the best requirement should be.
Are you asking if we have some kind of policy to support this?
No, that's another question.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking if, if this, if a 2.5 GPA for academy courses is, do you think that's adequate? To keep us from having a class of kids that just don't want to be there?
We can work on adding more of those. This is just preliminary, to have more conversations with the teachers and the principals, but from the research and the SWOT analysis and all those things that we did to get to this point, it would make a tremendous difference based on how it is right now. It would be a step in that right direction.
I mean, there are classes that I've taken in my life that I struggled to get a, you know, I got a B in, and I struggled to get that B. But I really, really struggled, and those were classes that I needed, and they were tough classes. But it seems to me, again, if I'm in an elite academy for science and technology and/or band, or whatever, that, or health, you know, maybe it's not elite, and maybe it shouldn't be an academy. If you can get a C at an elite academy in band, then maybe you can get an A where you are zoned, right? In your home zone.
I understand where you're going with that.
All right, thank you. What about the magnet schools? You know, I grew up here, so I never knew what a magnet school was until I moved away, but it seems to me, Baton Rouge has magnet schools, why don't we have magnet schools here in Lafayette Parish?
We're currently working on grant opportunities to establish more magnet programs.
So is it a funding issue?
It's, it's a combination of that. It's also a mindset, and moving towards that. I think we're on the right direction, and read, you know, looking at the evolution of where we were and where we are now, and moving in that direction. So certainly, working on magnet grants would put that lingo in the everyday vocabulary to get there. But yes, essentially, what we have are magnet programs.
So I, next question would be, we have a org chart here, proposed org chart. And I know that there's been some changes with, or changes that are pending with career and technical, okay, I'm sorry, never mind. Transportation. So with some of these changes, and I know this isn't a transportation discussion, but I know that was part of the initial analysis on how we could reorganize and make things more efficient. Do you have any updates on that?
Yeah, so part of the committee, we worked on looking at transportation. We've given our recommendation to Mr. Craig, based on that, and reducing the number of satellite stops and creating more of a mega stop. So I'm sure he, I'm going to defer the specifics to Mr. Craig.
Staff is still working on following the end-zone policies, but then tying that to Schools of Choice satellite stops. So we're still working on that process. Probably a third done in terms of finalizing routes.
How's it look?
We're going to save routes.
All right.
Yeah, we follow the directive.
Great. I think that's it. Mr. Hidalgo, I don't know if you have any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the Career and Technical Education and Schools of Choice Department.
Yes, ma'am. Over the years, the Career and Technical Education Director has assumed many responsibilities, including several things that probably do not belong under the position. So as you recall, last month, we had a conversation regarding the need to revitalize the Career Center. The current principal will be retiring at the end of the month, so instead of hiring another principal at this time, this is an opportunity to have our Career and Technical Education Director to work extensively to upgrade the Career Center offerings, as well as continuing to develop the Jump Start credentialing and workforce development initiatives throughout our district. And as you just heard, in regards to our Lafayette Academies of Excellence presentation, this is another area that is going to require intensive attention. And I would not want either initiative to be of less priority than the other, so the recommendation is to separate the two responsibilities. Career and Technical Education will remain under the Director, Robin Olivier, and the Academies of Excellence will go under the direction of Chief Academic Officer. And I would have the Marketing and Recruitment Coordinator being the primary contact person.
So on this chart, there really isn't a actual position for where it says Schools of Choice. That would be Ms. Azzi.
Well, that would be my umbrella, in which I would have the Marketing and Recruitment Coordinator basically the contact person.
I think in the previous, one of the budget meetings, we had talked about potentially looking at that job description to make sure that it accurately reflected the roles and responsibilities. If we didn't, I think it might be a good time if we're going to have different expectations of that position.
I don't think the expectations will change. It really does fit well.
Okay.
And, members of the board, I want to be clear that the proposed reorganization that we're discussing now has the Director serving as the administrator at the Career Center. The, the idea is, we would take the principal's salary, which is in the budget, and we would flip that and provide the Career Center with a second assistant principal. The idea being, the Director needs to be the administrator in charge at the Career Center. However, he or she, the Director, would be expected to go out to the other high schools and deal with Jump Start development. So I want to be clear that we're maintaining the principal's salary in the budget, but providing the Career Center with two assistant principals.
And the other administrative positions would be maintained, the librarian and those positions?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said Director, you're referring to the Director of Career and Tech here?
That's correct.
And as far as marketing of those Career and Technical programs, is that something that Ms. Olivier would coordinate?
Yes. She would, she would have more time to devote to specifically Career and Tech and Jump Start pathway development.
I have one question I forgot to ask, that I mentioned I was going to ask regarding the board policies on the, so board policy to implement this, are you guys going to recommend a board policy change to?
Mr. Konecik, I envision, based on the questions today, that we will come back to you shortly with an update, and at the appropriate time, bring to you whatever policies and permission needed by the board.
Thank you.
All right. There are no further questions on that?
Ms. Morris, I think we're expecting a vote on this reorganization, if you're so inclined.
To move to the board?
Yes.
For the full board. There's only two of us here to vote, since Mr. Hidalgo can't vote, so.
And I wanted to call your attention, we have a new team up here. Melva is retiring at the end of the month. She is acting as supervisor today. We have Dorothy Nezey, who is in Melva's chair, and we notified Amanda Blanco that she will be in Dorothy's chair all this week and moving forward.
Great. Congratulations. Dr. Agalov, regarding the career, the reorg graphic, I think it would be important to make it clear to the board where there are positions, like actual people working, and, because I understand, like, where it says Schools of Choice, it's really a title, not that box represents a title, not a position.
Yes, we'll clean that up in time for the Wednesday agenda.
All right. I move that we recommend that the reorg, reorganization of Career and Technical Education move to the full board.
And I'll second. Two, four, Nene Gint. Okay. The next matter on the agenda is the in-house attorney information item. I had requested information as to what parishes employed in-house counsel to handle their litigation and workers' comp cases. Ms. Thibodeau?
Suzanne Thibodeau, Assistant Director of Human Resources. I presented you today with a resolution that the Pacara Law Firm would do some immigration work for.
This is not the resolution.
Oh, this is not the resolution?
This is just the parishes that have in-house attorneys.
Okay, well, I left that sheet at the test, if you want me to get that for you.
It was only those four schools that have in-house attorneys in Louisiana?
Right. I sent it out through our organization, through the state, and that's, those are ones that responded. And there is a different, sometime, some of the districts got confused on exactly what a general counsel does for a district. So if you saw Ms. Morrison, some of them emails, if you saw them, they may reply, "I do have a general counsel", but when we looked further into it, they weren't really acting as general counsel. So I don't know if you want Mr. Hammons to clarify exactly what that would mean.
Okay. I guess this is a start for the information that I want to start gathering. What I'd like to ask you to do prior to our next meeting is to, one, just do some internet research and find maybe 10 sample job descriptions for in-house counsel for a school system, including within the job description, handling some of the litigation. I know it's out there. It doesn't have to be in Louisiana, because I'd like to have a nice group of documents to choose from, to see what could possibly work for us.
Okay.
And then, I would like to have you perhaps, I know you have emails of the attorneys on here, but I'd like to know who would be the best person to contact, especially for East Baton Rouge Parish, for someone to talk to. East Baton Rouge Parish, for someone to talk to, to get more information as to how their in-house attorney handles meetings and litigation and assigning cases and things like that. If you could find out who a good contact person is for that particular thing.
Right, and I did email, I had some email correspondence with the attorney and the attorney secretary, and neither one of them could provide me with their job description and with the human resources person in East Baton Rouge.
Were you able to get salaries?
No. I didn't ask them for their salary, I can go back and do that, I did not do that.
Okay, I'd be particularly interested in the salary for the East Baton Rouge in-house attorney, but if you can get it for the others as well, it should be public record as a salary for any public employee. And then the last thing, and this may be more for Ms. Bernard, for information to collect for next time, is I would like to see, I see you back there. I would like to get a really good number, and it can be an average by month of the number of attorney hours billed for liability versus workers' comp. And I understand that with one of our current attorneys, there's a cap on the attorney's fees, but they may be billing, writing down their hours for more. So I just want to get a really clear picture of how many hours per month attorneys are billing for our comp cases and for our liability cases. And you can do an average over, say, the last 12 months. Do you have any questions? Jeremy?
I do. We have a cap on a couple of arrangements. However, that just means a cap with the firm. So what happens over and above when there's more work but no more time?
Right. Well, so for example, if a firm has a cap on the attorney's fees, then they just don't get paid for the hours that exceed that.
But they're working those hours, is what you're telling me?
But they may be. So I want to know what our actual workload is by hour, because that's going to help us make determinations of whether we need to create an in-house department or continue the way that we've been. All right, if there are no further questions on that one, the next item is the Immigration Attorney Resolution, 05171908 for Immigration Attorney. Any questions? Mr. Kanesic?
Well, can you explain how we got here?
Well, Mr. Mear has taken over, Greg Mear has taken over our immigration work at this point, and he has had surgery, so he, just a week ago. So he is here to give you an update. If you'd like an update on the status, he has 15 of our cases now, so, but it was requested of me to bring, maybe we might spread the work out. It was requested of me to do the resolution so we could spread the work out, and so that's what I did. But would you like for Mr. Mear, I can get a microphone to him to give you an update on how it's going?
Well, it's not what the agenda item is, but no, I don't think we need an update on cases right now. The point is that we found ourselves in a bind because of another attorney that we had worked in some cases. It seems it, anyway, stuff happened, and we needed to move on, moving some immigration cases forward fairly quickly. And thankfully, we were able to hire Mr. Mear. And right now, today, before this resolution or before the board votes this week, he is the sole person performing immigration law for LPSS, and he is at Lafayette as well. So we are adding, basically to our toolbox with this resolution, another reputable immigration law firm based here in Lafayette to handle future immigration law cases. That's how we got here.
I guess my only comment on the resolution is I know Ms. Pacararo has a couple of associate attorneys who also handle immigration law, and if you look at the fee schedule, the fee that they would charge would be significantly less than the fees that Ms. Pacararo would charge because of the years of experience. So I think I'd want to make sure the resolution is broad enough to include, and in the past, the school board has simply adopted a resolution bringing on the firm and not naming, so you can probably change it to Elena Arcos-Pacararo and the law firm of, instead of with. But I think you just need to broaden the language a little bit so that Ms. Pacararo can use the associates in her office to assist her, and that would help decrease the cost as well, for routine matters especially.
Okay.
I understand there's one teacher in the audience who has a comment. If you want to go on up, ma'am? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julia Lopez, Spanish immersion teacher. I'm going to read the brief description, because for my accent, and you know my language. My name is Julia Lopez, I'm Spanish immersion teacher in Alice Boucher. For the last 12 years, I have worked for the Lafayette Paris School Board System and have dedicated this time to growing the Spanish immersion program. As the first teacher of the program, I can say that it has been a great pleasure to watch it grow for more than a decade. Unfortunately, as some of you may know, my past immigration attorney, Roger Ward, mishandled my immigration process. Because of this, I have not obtained my green card. I don't want to cry, okay? And my immigration status was left in a limbo. After this was uncovered, the school board changed a lodger, Mr. Mear. This new lodger stated that I will need to leave the country as well as my daughter. My daughter is in UL, she's 20 years, and she's changing her status for F1 in this month. My daughter, who is an UL student, contacted the Office of International Affairs and exposed her situation. Through the help of UL's Office of International Affairs, I was able to get in contact one of the most credible immigration attorney in the state. Her name is Kate Wengasparia. The immigration attorney has given me a lot of prospects in my migratory situation. Firstly, neither me or my daughter need to leave the country, that is our home. She asserted that I could not renew the type of visa I have currently, that is H1, that Mr. Mear said, because the past lodger didn't put my perm on time one year ago. He posted just in March, March, or, I don't know, this three months ago, I'm sorry. This new avenue will be happy, will be to apply for me a Q visa, which is a cultural exchange visa program that fits perfectly with the work I currently do with Spanish immersion. I hard work to get a lot of papers for her, syllabus, planification, evidence of festivals, pictures, and how I'm working with the school board and Alice Boucher Elementary Program. Not only did she find a solution to my case, but is very confident that in the future I can obtain my green card, as long as I have the support of the school board. Because she's going to have plenty of time to put again my perm, and in one year, I'm going to get my H1 visa again. The Q visa is working for 18 months, and she started process. After having my Q visa for a year, I can change to an H1 once again and continue my green card process, this time with a reliable and well-known immigration attorney. Today, I would like to ask the school board to financially support my legal fees of my new immigration attorney and adopt her to continue working in my case. I hope that you all can consider my situation and support this financially. My dream is to continue. I just need your support, that's it, I just need your support. Right here, I have the copy of this letter for you three. I have the lodger immigration curriculum, I have my contract, she's very punctual, she has almost everyday communication with me, she's really helping me and my daughter too. I just want to say thank you, because the school board and teachers, Ms. Tia, Ms. Jada, Mimi, the grandma, everybody here really loves me, you know? That is horrible for me to express right now, I cry because my work failed piece by piece in one day. That's it. Just thank you for your time, guys, really, I really appreciate that, Ms. Ham, to give me this space to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Great. So with regards to the resolution, we can't make a motion because there's not the votes, since Mr. Kanesic, I believe, is going to recuse himself from that, but I think it's already on the agenda for Wednesday. So I would just make the amendments that we talked about.
We'll make the recommended suggested changes.
All right, thank you. All right, the next matter on the agenda is the psychologist intern job description.
Okay. I just want to say, after we put up the psychologist intern job description, there was an error, so I'm just showing you what we'll be voting on Wednesday, and any other additions certainly that you would recommend tonight, we can add to that, the modifications. But at this point, there was something we, that was on the job description, we just took off, so it's not highlighted there, that Ms. Rochelle notified me of as soon as I put it up for tonight. So that's what you, what you're holding now is what you would be voting on. Also, you have a chart in front of you, we, Ms. Rochelle had talked to the University of, and asked them how other, other school districts they had worked with, and these were some of the other districts they worked with, and we contacted them to see how they paid their interns, so you can see how many days their interns worked, and then what their salaries were. And so I left ours for Lafayette Parish with a question, so you can tell us how you'd like ours to work.
What's the justification on the 187 days? Schools in, for how many days?
Schools, 182 days, and I originally had that, and I was, we were going to pay them like a teacher, and I think it was Dr. Aguilar came to me and said, why don't you give them a few extra days to get prepared? These are new teachers, new psychologists out, you know, in college, they may need some orientation. So that's where the 187 days came in. And Ms. Rochelle wants to speak, so.
Stacy Rochelle, Team Lead for Appraiser. Mr. Kanesic, these individuals would actually be taking the place of a school psychologist, which is a 202-day position, which I think that was the original proposal, was to put them in for the 202 days, and there was a question about having them not work the same amount. But understand that when we fill a position, it's not an intern position, it is a school psychologist position, which is a 202-day position.
We had some conversation regarding the rate of pay for this position, but we don't see any of that here today, unless it's this number up here.
Well, what we were going to, what we're proposing to pay is just pay them on the instructional pay scale. So they would make it exactly like a teacher, except they would not be getting the sales tax, the money from the sales, well, now it's all the same, so they would be making a teacher's salary for 187 days, is what they would make. So they wouldn't be on the one and a third, a regular psychologist would be on a one and a third pay scale, this is just like a teacher.
Do you know what that number is?
Do we have that? Believe it would be, we didn't put that, Mr. V can probably give that to me in two minutes. We just. Do you have it? Forty-one, four, twenty-six. Oh, well, that's the beginning, teacher, but then you would add two more days to that. So if you take forty-one, four, twenty-seven, and then you divide that by 182, and then you would add, that would be the daily rate of pay, and then you would add the extra five days to that.
Five days.
He's going to figure it out for you, just. Forty-two, five, sixty-five.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, do you need action from this committee? I think it's already on the agenda for Wednesday.
It's on the agenda, you can choose to move it forward or just have it roll over for Wednesday.
We'll just have it roll over. All right, the next item on the agenda are the Administration/Academic Department Reorganization, and that's the matter involving the changes to the social work positions. Are there social workers here in the audience? You have, have you reviewed the documents that were put on the agenda? Y'all going to speak? Okay, y'all want to go on? Okay. Ms. Thibodeau, you're going to explain the changes?
Well, I was just going to tell you that he is handing out right now the pupil appraisal, you would have a pupil appraisal social worker, and then you would have a school social worker. And that, before, we just had one job description, it was not clear. So we're really happy that now we'll have the opportunity to have, you would have pupil appraisal, which would continue to work 202, and then we would have the social worker job description that would work. Now, Dr. Aguilar had mentioned 182, and then we talked about 187. So they're both, as far as qualifications, they really both have to be certified, the state of Louisiana is a school social worker, and there are some other language that different supervisors put in, but the bottom line, if they don't have those licensures, the state of Louisiana is not going to certify them as a school social worker. So, and we just, there's supervisors that, supervisor, there's a supervisor for the school social worker, and he just looked at the job description and, and said, these are some, this makes it more current in what they're doing now, and then we had the pupil appraisal, Stacy Rochelle looked at for the pupil appraisal social workers, and she just made it more current for the responsibilities, and we just, I feel like the days are more representative of what they need to work.
So I want to make sure that, for these positions and those that are watching, that are in these positions, you know, we just went through a budget process that actually we're going to continue later on this week with the adoption of the budget. And when, you know, we obviously get a lot of feedback, some solicited and some unsolicited regarding positions, and people, people are not shy about giving us their opinion, but one of the recurring themes that we got regarding these positions was, they're vital, they're very important, every position's very important, but with these specifically, they're very important. Don't cut the position, just cut the number of days. Don't cut the position, just cut the number of days, right? And I got And I got lots of feedback like that, lots of feedback, from not only those in the position that were at risk potentially of losing their position, but also supervisors, colleagues, people that use that support, use these positions for support. So as we're trying to find in the budget and spend only what we need to spend, staff has looked at that feedback that we received, and this is the recommendation that we're getting. So, Dr. Aguilar, I guess that's where it gets put back on your broad shoulders, is these are the recommendations that you're providing to the board after looking at what is absolutely needed for these positions so that we can conserve money to do other things and so that we have money in the future when we're looking at new positions to hire.
You're absolutely correct. And I just want to be clear that the documents that will be under consideration Wednesday night will show this new job description as 187 days of employment. Idea being that they work five additional days beyond the teacher's work year. We are trying to maximize the amount of money available in the revenue stream so that we can put as much as we can in the classroom. These are important services. We're trying to marry the needs of the district along with the revenue that we are taking in. So these are my recommendations, and I would urge the board to give serious consideration.
And, Dr. Aguilar, during a prior meeting, we had discussed having your staff reach out to local providers to explore the possibility of outsourcing some or all of the social work services. I just wanted to see what the status was.
That's correct. We have an upcoming meeting with service providers in the Lafayette area. My expectation is that contracted services will be able to pick up much of the duties needed by the district. And so as that happens, we'll bring those recommendations back to the board.
We're actually meeting next week, Ms. Morse.
Okay. And yes, because of the nature of this particular item, let's just bring it back to either the executive committee or to the regular board so that everyone can keep up with where we are.
Yes, ma'am.
On that. So, because I know this will be an issue again at next year's budget, during next year's budget cycle. All right. If anyone in the audience has comments, please.
I'm a school social worker, and I just wanted to add, in considering the budget, currently the, our, the services that we provide to students with IEPs are billed. Part, part of that is billed. The equivalent of five social worker salaries at this time is paid out of IDEA. So all of the social workers under child welfare and attendance at this time are not, five of those, the equivalent of five of us are not coming out of the general fund. So I don't know that that's reflected, and the services that we provide for students that have IEPs do generate funds. So I just would like for you all to consider that.
Madam President, I recommend that we move the, this to the board, the full board. These changes to the full board.
All right. No second.
Out of curiosity, how much of that was taken into consideration? The, up to five social workers that basically the services are billed, I guess to, I don't know if it's grant funding or I don't know what it is, but how did that play in?
Mr. Guidry understands the billable services and the money goes back into the general fund. It's all part of the, the idea that it's, it's not as though those are five extra positions because that money can be used for any legal purpose. I hate to use those words. But it can be, be used in other areas in the instructional process.
So if, if those five, those specific positions, those five positions were not, were no longer part of the school system, are we still billing and receiving that amount? Are those positions paid for by that billable amount, or is that going to be billed irregardless? And that's a word, by the way.
Billable. Well, depending on the number of billable services and the revenue that you derive from that, it goes back into the general fund.
Right, but this.
So, so as you are, as an example, just hypothetical example, if you're reducing the number of social workers, you, you obviously could, would likely be impacting your number of billable services provided. So that would reduce the revenue stream. So the quick answer to your question is it's factored into the general fund and the number of positions we're able to fund.
Thank you.
All right. The next matter on the agenda is the administration reorganization, and this is the one involving the instructional strategist.
As you see with the reorganization, we would eliminate the position of instructional strategist, and then we would create another position entitled instructional teacher leader. And the difference would be in the days from 202 to 187 days. And some of the responsibilities were just more current. Our work, Ms. Samick sent me the responsibilities of how she felt they would function in the schools, instructional strategist. Or that, it would now would be instructional teacher leader in the new position is what we would call them.
Some of the feedback I received today regarding this is that, as I understand it, we are recruiting teachers from the classroom to take on these positions of instructional, instructional strategist and/or if we're going to call it instructional teacher, teacher leader. And when we do that, we make them ineligible for the 2002 sales tax, which is a pay cut.
That is correct.
Which is a pay cut.
That is correct.
So there's concern that we're going to have a difficult time recruiting teachers to take these positions if then they make less than a teacher in the classroom. And I just wanted to add that and see if we wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Well, that is true. They do give up their sales tax and the extra check. And it's according to how many days. We talked to Dr. Aguilar today. He even talked about increasing it some to make up the difference. It would just be up to you what you would want to do. If they, if the instructional teacher leaders go to 187 days, you would save $209,000 approximately to the budget, 209,442. If they work 182 days, it's $279,255. If we make them 192 days, it would be $139,628. And I believe Mr. Craig will have in front of him exactly a 15-year teacher with a master's. We computed about the difference in what they would make. Do you have that, Mr. Craig?
I'm sorry. Average salary for teacher? Hold on a second.
Mr. Kanesic, the, when they move off of the teacher salary schedule, the 2002 tax eligibility, they go onto the instructional salary schedule, and the board just, over the last year, added that $1,000 back. So that's not an issue any longer. What is an issue is the 14th check.
Excuse me, Dr. Aguilar. I'm going to ask the audience to please keep your comments to yourself. Thank you.
A teacher with 15 years and a master's degree is currently in the 16, 17 school year is $49,614. That's without the benefits, but that's off the salary schedule.
So if that person were to move over to become an instructional teacher leader, what would their pay be?
If that person was, if, if the job description was 187 days, that, that individual would make $50,976, so about 1,000, 1,300 roughly. If the job description was 192 days, that individual would make $52,339, which is about $2,700 difference. And if that instructional teacher leader was a 202-day employee, that would be $55,006.5.
But as it stands now, at 187 days, the difference is about $1,300.
So, Mr. Kanesic, it's about a wash, but the difference is the five extra days of work. My recommendation to the board is to tag this job responsibility at 192 days. And at that point, there, there is a difference in pay, and then the individual has a choice to make whether to remain a classroom teacher or to choose to be a teacher leader.
Right. I know we have this, I mean, I think with assistant principals is another situation where a teacher has to make a conscious choice to forego money in order to move into a different path. So that is a personal decision that I understand people have to make. But I think the most important question is how many days do they really need to work? Do they need to work 182, 187, 192, 202? I mean, the nine of us don't know. I can tell you that. So unless you tell us how many days they really, really need to work, not how many they want to work, and not how many they want to get paid for, and not, not how to make it equitable and fair across the board, but how many do they really need to work?
I, I think there's ample work for 10 additional days in a calendar year. I mean, that would be my recommendation.
So that's 192?
Can I jump in?
Mr. Hidalgo.
Can you go over just a couple of those numbers right quick? The 187 days versus the teacher at the same level?
So the, the basic teacher salary, 15 years with a master, was $49,614. That comes out to a daily rate of pay of $272.60.
And then the 187?
And if that person was a teacher leader, 187 days would be $50,976. And 192, 192 days would be $52,339.
So I guess the question I have for you, Dr. Aguilar, one question is, early on, you had recommended cutting up to 11 strategists, and then that, you, that changed. You, you came back with the revision to that budget, and you said, no, let's not cut any. And it went back and forth a couple of times, but where we are now is not cutting any. And then you've come back with a recommendation to cut the amount of day, well, actually, others recommended to you that you cut the amount of days. And so that's what you're doing. But I guess my initial question is, why did you land at 187? Why is that the initial recommendation? And if you don't land at 187, where are we going to find the difference? Because whether it's 5,000 or 500,000, I would like to see the budget number stay where it is. So if we're going to add money back, we have to take it away somewheres else.
Okay. So the 40 or so instructional strategists have a combined burden on the budget of $3 That, that represents about $75,000 per individual, $3 million. The instructional strategist, strategist position was argued effectively by the principals, many of them are still in the audience here tonight as well, that this is one position the principals wanted to have in the budget. It's no secret, there were, were some board members who suggested, let's cut all of the instructional strategists. Let's save that $3 million. We could hire 44 classroom teachers with that $3 million. So we could, we could actually give a, each school one additional teacher. So there were some ideas about, let's just, rather than create instructional strategist 202-day job year, why don't we just add a teacher to every campus and pay them a teacher's salary and have that principal use that teacher, 182-day contract year, use that teacher however they, they feel might be needed for that particular school. I understand the logic there. However, the importance of the instructional strategist cannot be forgotten, that they are there to help the school to collect data, disaggregate data, plan effectively, improve instruction, and raise student achievement. There are countless stories about the job responsibilities of instructional strategist varies depending on the campus. So if we're going to use instructional strategist, and the intent of the board is to reduce the financial burden, trying to guard and protect classroom teachers, the idea being, and I heard repeatedly, let's reduce the number of days. Without fully understanding the 2002 benefits, the 187-day recommendation implied that they would work three days before school and two days after school ended. But we have to get the money right. Otherwise, we may or may not have the ability to fill these positions. So we have to land somewhere. Either we give every school a classroom teacher, one extra classroom teacher, and we cut, you know, we flip that in the budget, or we continue to use them as instructional, structurally minded individuals. And if, to make it work, I believe the 192 days makes it financially feasible to continue this as long as we can.
I didn't think of it this way until Mr. Kanesic brought it up here tonight, but there are two other positions whose days are being cut who don't have the same opportunity to say, well, let's make this work out for me financially. So my question to you is, you know, if it's, if this boils down to financial decision, that's fine. Where else are we going to cut? Or does this boil down to, this is what we need? Because I'm sure if I were an instructional strategist, I wouldn't want any days cut. Now, if I, if my job were on the line, I'd say, well, cut some days, but not too many, but, you know, just a couple. I'm, I'm ashamed that that's the, the luxury we're battling at this point in time as opposed to what do we need, and then move forward from there. And lastly, I want to say to my fellow board members, I know I can't vote here tonight, but I think that the way the budget process started in our first official meeting, where we started lumping all things together, and I know I made some conscious deliberate votes on certain items because a bad apple to me ruins the whole basket, I got called to the carpet on some of those things unrightfully. So, so I think the full board needs to have the opportunity to hash this out, one item at a time, as it comes down from the superintendent's office.
Absolutely. My thoughts on this are, one, I think 182 days is what instructional strategist should work, just like the teachers. And once the decision is made to take a position like this where they're not carrying a student roster, they're no longer entitled to the 2002 tax. So it's a non-issue to me. Either you carry a roster, that's the criteria we set as a board, or you don't. If you don't, you're not entitled to the 2002 tax. But that's a decision that's made when somebody that's a decision that's made when somebody decides to leave the classroom to do administrative work. And that's what this is. So at this point, you're recommending 187 days on the documents you've provided. I'm more inclined to go with 182 days because we're trying to save money, and that's the balance between our decision to not cut 11 positions during this budget cycle. So it's a compromise. So I know we're not making a decision on the number of days tonight, and it'll be up to the full board, but on Wednesday, I'll say the same thing. I'm more inclined to go with the 182 days, like the teachers, and I understand. But if the decision, or if the thing that's making the decision for each individual is whether or not they get the 2002 tax, then the question should be, "Do I need to stay in the classroom or not?" So that's my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just clarify right quick?
I just want to, I want to respond to Mr. Hidalgo. When we talked about need, let's be clear, this is an additional position. We can have an academic school year without the instructional strategist position. It doesn't, they're not teaching any students. They are helping, assisting the school to be more effective instructionally. But if we talk about need, the instructional strategist position does not fall under need.
And I want to be clear, I'm open and ready to support 192 if that's what the motion is. My issue is making sure that, not the administration, but that the board sees this equally all the way through, not just instructional strategist positions. Let's not lump a bunch of things together so we can hide from individual votes. That's all I'm suggesting.
I have a question, Ms. Morris. Dr. Aguilar, I don't know exactly what an instructional strategist does on a day-to-day basis, but I would assume that they have a lot more to do at the beginning of the year than they do the end of the year. So, and I don't know. I mean, you can tell me if I'm wrong. But if we do, if the board does end up reducing the amount of days, would changing the day that they report for work, maybe they do still report to work 10 days ahead of time, but then they leave 10 days before everybody else leaves towards the end of the year because their work is done. I can't, I mean...
Mr. Kanesic, they are incredibly busy at both ends of the school year. There's, faculties and staffs are already working, crunching numbers, anticipating new instructional models, ideas, strategies. So the 10 days is five days before and five days after the close of school. You know, it's possible that it could be six and four, but there's work to be done on both ends.
Thank you.
Okay. A related, but different issue is, I've had conversations and I realize that the instructional strategist at Lafayette High School, for example, is doing work for the 2,000-plus students there. But then we have instructional strategists at the elementary schools who have 300, I think, at Deux-Song, 600 or 700 at most of the other elementary schools. So there's quite a difference in the number of students that each instructional strategist is providing services for. So I think that as we move along in the process, we may need to consider, and I'm going to rely on you and your staff to think about it and maybe bring something back to us, something along the lines of a ratio. I think that if the high school instructional strategists are able to perform the services that are performed for 1,500 to 2,000 students, then we may need to look at what you had proposed in the budget cycle, that we, as positions are vacated, that perhaps we don't fill them so that we can kind of equalize the number of students that are being taken care of by each instructional strategist. That's kind of working towards our next budget cycle and the same idea of eliminating positions. Hopefully, by that point, the positions, not hopefully, but if some of those positions are vacant at that time, then it may make a difference in how we decide next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Thibodeau. So I see the current duties are a little bit longer than the proposed duties. Can you tell me what's being taken away, or what's being traded off? Not necessarily that it's being taken away, but what is the trade-off? Why is the, from a professional perspective, why are the proposed duties column, why is the proposed duties column shorter than the current duties?
Ms. Samick typed up the duties for me and created the duties and reviewed the job description because it is an academic position. So I'll ask her to comment on that.
Actually, I created this several weeks ago, and they're very similar.
Is it just tightening up of the words, or am I missing?
It's really very similar responsibilities.
Right. Thank you.
I see one thing like RTI. I don't think, the job description was created in the duties years ago before this was a focus, RTI. And RTI is really a focus, an instructional strategist facilitate that. So, and PLCs, years ago, when this job description was created, there wasn't the focus on PLCs like it is now. So I see that's one thing Ms. Samick, or two things Ms. Samick added, that made the job description a lot more current than it was.
I'm just concerned about what the issue has become. The issue's become a pay issue. I don't like what I'm being paid either. I want a raise. It's become a pay issue, and I don't think it has to be a pay issue. I think there's enough information here to where it doesn't have to be a pay issue. But it's become a pay issue. That's problematic.
Ms. Lemare?
Yeah. Mia Lemare, principal, Elio Giudice Elementary School in Scott. There are several things that came up that caused me to have little reactions. And I'd like to answer some of the questions, perhaps, that you have from a principal's perspective. I know that, Mr. Hidalgo, you questioned days, and is there, how many do they need versus how many, or should they work, or are they required, you know? I can give you an example. Our strategist, they work the same days administrators work, principals, assistant principals, currently. Those 10 days, of those 10 days, she was committed off-campus for eight of those 10 days for things that were district, district requests, things like that. Last week, the summit in New Orleans, instructional strategist went to that. They also received training for various things from the district to come back and re-deliver to the schools. So of the eight days that were, of the 10 days that were done, you know, for the summer, let's call them the summer, begin, end of school days, eight of them, they were off-campus, required, you know, at other places, receiving trainings, things like that, to come back and share with the school. So, you know, to reduce them, then somebody else will have to go to that training, likely me or our assistant principal. And then, you know, we, then we're not able to get our work done that we're prepping for, for the upcoming school year. Because the entire time she was gone, I was able to stay back and, you know, work with scheduling and different things that we were doing, prep for the next school year, handbooks, agenda books, all those different things, and editing and things like that. So as far as for that, there's a lot of days that they go and receive training, and then they come back and then they deliver to our campuses. And then also, Ms. Morris, if I could mention, you had commented about high school. I am not a high school principal, so I cannot speak to the job that they do at the high school. But I've had four children who have gone through high school, and I don't believe that the direct instruction impact is the same that instructional strategists have at the elementary level. And the reason, I'm going to give you my justification for that. We're teaching the children to read. We're teaching them math. We're teaching them all the things they need to know, all the tools they need to get in their toolbox so that they can then read to learn. And so our strategist is instrumental, so that she can help those teachers to give them the best strategies, you know, work with them, model lessons, different things like that, so that it improves instruction in the classroom. And then that directly impacts the children. Again, I can't speak as to what the high school strategists do, but I don't, you know, I would imagine that on the high school level, the children, you know, it's understood that they're able to read and able to, you know, then take, you know, and I don't know, again, if a strategist is in an algebra class, or in a trig class, or in a, you know, bio class, I have no idea because that's not my area. But I do know that even though we have 375 children, each and every one of them is impacted by our strategist. And so she does model lessons in those classrooms, and she does work directly with those children. She does, and Dr. Aguilar mentioned several things that they do which are instrumental. So, and again, I would think if they're, or I guess a point of clarification I would have is, if they're on, if they're called teacher, if the title is switched to teacher, then why wouldn't they move back to the teacher scale and not be put on a separate scale?
Because the criteria requires that they have a roster. But allow me to back up and say that, I appreciate your opinion. However, and I know that you didn't say that to me, you were just speaking, but I have never and will never question the importance of the instructional strategist. I get it. I get it. In fact, I encourage you and each one of them to go back and watch every video that has ever been taped here in this school board complex since the day this board got elected. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at what school board member stands out as having supported the instructional strategist, maybe, maybe, a little more than the others. But I didn't come up with this idea of reducing their days.
Right.
They did. They did. So I'm not trying to turn the buck, but it's where we are. And so it was, reduce the days so we don't cut the position. Now, we're going to reduce the days. We need to figure this out, but it has to be equitable. It has to be fair to every other position. It can't be about the money in one position, and that's what it is right now. And I know it doesn't have to be because I'm repeating myself. I see it. But again, we're talking about the money. Well, why can't we put them back on the teachers? Because they don't meet the criteria. If they are a teacher, and a classroom teacher with a roster, they can go back on that schedule.
And if I have to give our strategist a roster, her roster would have 375 names on it because she works and impacts each one.
I get it. And that's a clever, I get it.
No, I'm not trying, and I'm not trying to be facetious by any means. I'm simply saying that, you know, I saw the social worker job description draft thing, pupil appraisal, whatever, and there, they get that tax. And listen, administrators, we don't get that tax. That tax is evil. Okay?
You're telling me.
Because those who have it want to keep it, and those who don't have it want it. And so, you know, yes, I know, I've been an administrator for over 10 years. We don't get that tax. So, you know, it's an evil thing. But still, I guess my point is, is they, you know, if you're going to cut the days, then it's going to make the job less appealing to people. It's a necessary position. It'll make it less appealing to some, and some just won't be able to afford to stay doing that.
But if we cut the days, then raise the pay, why did we cut the days?
Well, but then I guess...
This is a budget issue.
I know. I understand. And I'm wondering about the math. So if they're switched back to the teacher's scale, and then the days are reduced from 202 to, let's say, 192, as was mentioned, then where's the math? I don't know. I'm not working a calculator.
So the only thing, correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that the teachers have gotten over the years, considering the votes we recently made to put administrators back on that $1,000 pay raise, the only thing above and beyond that the teachers are receiving, a classroom teacher with a roster, is the 14th check. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Correct. So there were two $500 pay raises, $1,000, that teachers got over the years. One was as recent as, you know, maybe, I don't know, four years ago. It's irrelevant. But now, the administrators are on that scale. Is it, are the other classifications, like the instructional strategists and others, on that same scale?
Yes. We keep them on separate scales because the funding's a little different. But yep, they're on, the instructional pay scales.
Same amount of money.
Yes, sir. So the only difference is the 14th check?
Right.
So I...
Well, let me ask this, and she's asking me to talk, and she can have the mic because I'm really done, but I just have one question. What is this about the $1,000? Because I thought that they were not getting the $1,000, but are they getting, Dr. Aguilar, I don't know the answer to that question. That, there's something about $1,000 that the strategists were not getting because it was switched, the scales were switched.
This board added the funds to bring the instructional salary schedule in line with the teacher's salary schedule.
So they're the same, basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't know. That's why I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. How we, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. Oh, Dr. Aguilar, the, on the job title, if this does move to the board, and we do talk about this at the full board, the title instructional teacher leader, I wonder if the word teacher is going to be a problem one day with reconsideration of the 2002 sales tax, although we do have the matrix and whatnot. You may want to consider if there's a title that excludes that word.
Yes, sir. We'll work on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Duplee. I work at Acadiana High School, and I am the instructional strategist there. Without meaning any offense, I don't believe that why we are here today has anything to do with strictly waving our hand in the air for the sales tax pay issue. I will tell you, I accidentally found out about our job revision only because I was looking at the board agenda for Wednesday with my principal this morning because I was at work. The alarm is that for the third time in seven years, we've been asked to reapply for our jobs. And no, the tasks have not changed. The titles have changed numerous times. Yes, we accepted that when we left the classroom that we wouldn't be on the sales tax check anymore, even though for a while we were. I think the issue is that we're compensated for the work we do, and that what we do enables teachers to do what they do. We are the presentation for the back-to-school in services. So when our teachers show up August 3rd, we're the face they see, and all the information from the summer comes out of our mouths. When they show up for optional in-service days that they get paid for, they're built into our calendar day. But again, we're the face of the information. So if we were cut back to days, then all we're being asked to do is to do prep work and to go to conferences and to go represent, we don't represent one entity of the district. We're like the funnel. So every academic area funnels all of their must-do federal mandates, district mandates through us. So it's not that we're waving the flag to say we deserve and demand more. We were not fans of getting cut four years ago when we were cut down the number of days. I will speak for myself. I was not asked about giving up days this go-round. Like I said, it was purely accidental that we stumbled across it today. When we were voted back in by the board, it was a huge sigh of relief that we could continue on with the summer and get ready for the next school year. So to have to come back today is a bit of a jarring thing when we see that the proposed job title was written on the 17th of May, and that when the whole budget process was occurring, it was never brought to us that we might potentially have to reapply for our jobs again, or have to deal with cut days. And I don't mean that, again, disrespectful to anyone. It's just that from where we stood, the jobs that we held, and the duties that we were expected to do when the budget went to the public was where we were. And so to find out today that that wasn't where we were has a room full of kind of rattled individuals. Because technically, our last day was Thursday of last week, which meant many of us went home for the summer thinking we would just come back because we are expected to go to the administrative conferences. So we're just a little off balance today and don't want to feel like you hear us saying that the only reason you see us is because we want money and we want the sales check. Like, we've let that go long ago. We've let go the, leaving the classroom by choice. It's just more of, we've accepted these duties and these responsibilities, and all we would like to be able to do is get paid to the days that we do them. Many of us, myself included, I've been doing this for 13 years in various title. I can accumulate anywhere from 80 to 100 hours of comp time in the summer because I never go home. never go home. And that's my choice, but the hours that I am there and the days that I am expected to be there, I would just like to be paid accordingly. And that's our, that's my personal statement.
Just briefly, I'd like to respond. There was no, make sure, I think it's important you understand there's no ill intent that this board has a process, and this is the process that we're under. We have budget issues that we've been dealing with the last month. One of those recommendations, as I mentioned before, many of you in this room probably sent me an email saying, "Don't cut the position, cut the hours." And I can go back and look if I need to. So that's what we're doing. We're going through our process, and this is part of that process. While it's fresh in our mind, in preparation for the future, we're addressing it today. And so everyone knows, we don't try to hide anything from the public. We're actually obligated to the public to post our meeting agendas. We're obligated to post them 24 hours ahead of time. Most of the time, we post them way ahead of time, but we can modify them up to about 24 hours. And so with that, I just wanted, I wanted to respond to that. But she did bring up a good point, Dr. Aguilar, and I don't remember the term that she used, if it was comp time or extra hours that employees can work and get compensated for. Is that, is that a method of compensating people for work in excess of their 182 days?
Mr. Kinesic, I was surprised to hear that word as well. We're going to have to look into whether or not that's appropriate. They are exempt employees, so technically, there is no such thing as comp time for an exempt employee.
I accumulate the hours. I don't actually trade them in for anything, so I don't know if you want to just call it donated time. You know, it's not a trade-in of, I would like to take, you know, it's not, I don't do anything with them. They're just, if you really want to know how many days I'm there, I go home maybe two weeks in the summer, and that's it. But we don't, we don't use them for anything. And I wasn't earlier, I want to just clarify with you, because I don't mean to be disrespectful. I'm a nerd of the board meetings, so I'm constantly watching the agendas. And my point would have been just a little bit of professionalism, and if I'd have heard it from the people that I work for, instead of discovering it on the board agenda. It was not that we don't see that because it's public and it's posted. It would have just been a little bit nicer to have gotten a heads-up that, hey, you know, go ahead and know that your job is changing again. That's all that was.
Thank you. Madam President, I move that the board, that the instructional strategist reorganization move to the full board.
And I'll second.
Madam President, I think, my understanding is that if this moves forward, the professionals in the positions will not have to reapply for their job. Can we get solid clarification on that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, the last matter on the agenda is the return-to-work program. Ms. Bernard?
We have prepared a return-to-work program to sort of establish our means of bringing retire, I'm sorry, injured workers back to work soon, as soon as we can. And by doing that, we would develop some transitional jobs in a job bank, which would temporarily be assigned to someone who may be able to do some tasks but isn't at maximum medical improvement yet. And so we would limit that to 90 days with the option that the superintendent could extend it if it was in the best interest of the, both the district and the employee. And so that's what you have before you, as well as some flow charts to show how that would work. And as soon as we get some direction from the board on this policy or this procedure, we will meet and establish some details among who's going to be responsible for which items. In addition, when and if we do take this to the full board, we would like to include in the recommendation that the board approve the return-to-work program, and also include the consideration that employees assigned to the program might work an adjusted calendar within the days required by their contract. And that would be because some people are 180 days, and if we bring them back, we might need them during the holidays when the schools are out, but we work. So we would adjust their calendar. They would still work 180, but they might work some dates that they would have been off in their other job. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do. One, I think this is a great start. I know we've been talking about this for several years. So a couple of questions I have is, one, the temporary basis. I'm concerned, and you might want to ask either Hammond and Sills or the Smith Law Firm, whether that the use of the word temporary is going to comply with the Banks case on return-to-work and all of those cases that come under it. It's a Supreme Court case talking about return-to-work and it being an actual available job. So, and then the Third Circuit, that temporary thing may remove it actually from the type of return-to-work program that we may be thinking of. So just something to think about and kind of clarify in the future. Also, the jobs that you have listed on here, and I know these are just the first at the beginning, are all for light duty. And I know it's difficult in our system for sedentary jobs, but it'd be great to have something, and also one that will be appropriate for any injured employees who do not have a GED or a high school diploma.
Okay.
So, and the one that I thought off the top of my head is perhaps a bus attendant-type position, maybe, where they're sitting in the bus, but they're not lifting, moving, or something. So that was just a thought. So I'd like to see, and again, I know we're at the beginning, so those were the things that I thought I wanted to look at over.
We did send it to Hammond and Sills for review, so we have had someone look at it. But if you want me to ask those specific questions, we can.
I'm just concerned about that temporary. I know that litigation that I'm familiar with, even having individuals go through the Job Corps to get jobs, the Third Circuit was not terribly impressed. So I just want to make sure that we're meeting the criteria or standards that the Third Circuit has developed following that Banks decision.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the 90 days. Is that, is that there for an intent? Why don't we, I mean, I don't understand why you need the 90-day period if you're saying that they'll stay there until they're, they return to his or her permanent job assignment, whichever occurs first.
We can.
I mean, is there, is there a reason to keep it a time limit at 90 days? Like at 90, because maybe we don't want to be obligated for 91 days? Is that...
I think because we want to reevaluate it every 90 days.
Every 90, okay.
Because we don't want the person to sit in that job forever, because you're creating, you just keep creating additional jobs, and you're still filling their old jobs. So that's not really a very good budgetary...
Right. So hypothetically, if a teacher were injured on the job and then went through the return-to-work program, that teacher would be offered one of these positions? So maybe the receptionist position at a school?
Right.
Okay.
Maybe she broke her leg, and she's a kindergarten teacher, and it's really hard to get around. Maybe we could bring her back sooner until she can get around and go back to the classroom.
Now their pay would stay at, how would their pay work?
Well, those are details we have to work out with Mr. Gidry. They would probably be a reduced pay for, we'd have to determine where we're going to put those on the salary schedule. And then we'd have to maybe pay supplemental earnings benefits if they don't reach 90% of their pay.
Okay.
Right, it's a calculation set under workers' comp.
And Mr. Kinesic, Ms. Morris, it's conceivable that at some point, we would need to come back to you with a budget request. If this thing takes off and we have five or 10 return-to-work situations, initially, we can pull this out of the workers' comp side of our budget, but I can easily see where this could become a separate line item that would need a budgetary amount.
Correct.
Because you're hiring them in a temporary position, and you're filling their old position.
And we're taking them off, but we're taking them off our, where are we taking them off if we're, because we're paying them somehow, I'm asking Dawn this question.
Right, when they're out of work, they're getting paid a comp rate, which is significant. If you're a teacher, it's very low. There's a maximum rate, which is not that significant on a base, comparatively speaking. So we are paying a reduced amount, but we may be repaying them that forever if they are disabled from work.
I understand.
But the whole system is to get people in condition to return to work and to get off of workers' comp and to get back into the workforce.
Right.
All right.
Madam President, I move that the return-to-work program be moved to the full board. Oh, here, never mind, I'll read this one. I move that the Board Executive Committee approve the proposed return-to-work program to be presented to the full board, including consideration that employees assigned to the program work an adjusted calendar within the days required by their contract.
All right, then that was the last item on the agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.